Good evening. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting school districts business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Upon request of the superintendent, the district shall make arrangements for persons with disabilities to be able to participate in this meeting. I call this meeting to a close. I'm pleased to be able to call. Mr. Albrecht. Mr. Arnold. Mrs. Bruterly here. Mr. Greer-Rox here. Ms. Cangus here. Mr. Lundie here. Ms. Wera here. Ms. Rafferty. Mr. Watson here. Moving on, we'll give the approval of the meeting minutes from October 16, 2023. I'm with the Board of Education for the meeting minutes from October 16. I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded for any discussion on the meeting minutes. During no discussion, all those in favor of approving the meeting minutes as presented from October 16, please say aye. And the opposed say nay. All right, moving on to the approval of the agenda. Our policy provides that the superintendent of schools shall prepare an agenda for all four meetings as directed by the President of the Board of Education. I move with the Board of Education to approve the agenda as presented. I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded, there's very discussion. During no discussion, all those in favor of approving the agenda as presented say aye. Aye. And the opposed say nay. The agenda has been approved. Move on to our school presentation, starting with our shining star. Dexter High School teacher Jamie Dudas will be recognized for stellar for centuries shifts navigated using stars in the night sky to track their path across the seas. Dexter Community School District also relies on shining stars to guide our work and our and map our progress. We will be recognizing DCST members who go above and beyond their normal duties and set a stellar example for others. Honorees will be selected from nice job notes submissions and other communications based on the ways that exemplified our district mission, champion learning, develop, educate, and inspire. Tonight we honor Jamie Dudas, our Dexter High School teacher. Our kudos for Jamie Dudas come from a variety of perspectives, admin, staff, and students. From nice job note, Mr. Dudas brings great passion and energy to everything he does. From teaching students about the industrial revolution to refurbishing donated computers on his own time to support students in need. Jamie goes above and beyond. His remarkable ability to engage students in the subject matter, create an inclusive learning environment, and foster critical thinking skills make him a memorable and effective instructor. Jamie's commitment to students through both academically and personally is evident and it's clear that he goes above and beyond to make a positive impact. From Dr. Timmies, Jamie's passion for students in our district is unmatched. And last but not least, we have this rating endorsement from a graduate who struggled to stay the course in high school. Mr. Dudas made me want to be a better student. And from a personal standpoint, my son had Mr. Dudas and I'll never forgive. He had Mr. Dudas during the 2019, 2020 year, so he didn't get to have the full year of Mr. Dudas, which was sad. But Mr. Dudas always kept in touch with my son and I'll never forget, my son handed me this envelope and said, look at this. And I said, what is this? And he said, Mr. Dudas has clipped, has clipped from like the the sometimes articles and always writes little notes and says, good job. You know, great job, great direction, paying attention. Just such a wonderful, just personal touch that he makes such a great memories for all the students. Just such an honor to be able to give him this wonderful, lots of fit in our appreciation.
I'd like that if you think it's a nice star here before we recognize that shining star. Thank you.
Jamie, definitely, if you want, you're welcome to.
I, just the fact that you're taking additional time to recognize so many other people in the district. There's several hundred people that you recognize. So the fact that you've got this initiative, I appreciate that, staff, teachers, students, drivers, everybody else. I appreciate you seeing those extra things. So you're seeing them, seeing them, they're, they're a safe person, that's why we do it. Just thank you.
Our next school presentation, which is our transportation. Our no transport zone.
Mr. McCullough here, so we do have representation, presentation. Joining us and now before the presentation. What do you do, what do I do?
Thanks. The stuff happens when we got it.
Hold on, take a guy. The change of the. That's why it's now a different day. It doesn't take forever. Oh, well, we got to change it, but I think I had. No, I don't want to go to that TV, so. All right, Mr. McCullough here, Mr. McCullough here in a second. We had to, we just finished up the German exchange. Was riding one of our positive to the airport. They are, they were. So we had been looking at transportation and options since grade four school started. We've been working through what are the options that are able to provide transportation and not have to shut down buses every week. Our transportation department has been pulling miracles for years. Their drivers are fantastic, which is so dedicated. And, and we're in a, we're in a spot along with this, this, this. So we are feeling that national shortage of drivers. And last year we prepared a series of contingency plans and shared those with families. Right off of the bus. Right on time, right on time. So, like you said, it sounds good. So last year we worked through contingency plans to share with families. Most of the contingency plans utilized were handled internally. And this was where Dean and Lori addressed the department prepared. And so, and we didn't really see any much disruption service. It worked all the two weeks. We had to shut a bus shutdown this, this year. So back on August 28th, we talked about two challenges that were currently, we were short a few drivers at that time going through a number of routes. We're actually over the short 11 drivers. Compared to the same number of routes we ran prior. And we raised pay, recruiting, creating, the million dollar profit. So, so we go next. So we're there, so we hired two additional drivers right now that Denise is training going through. Both should be available to drive by end November, so they'll be able to jump on routes. Um, we are interviewing one more candidate. This was as of two days ago or at the end of last week when I talked to Denise. She, here, there she is back there. I didn't even. Um, so that was the last week, so we're interviewing. Um, to be honest, there's been a few other candidates that have come in and come through. We want great people in front of our kids. So if they're not there, we're not taking them forward if they're not meeting our standards when it comes. At this time, if you remember the last slide, we're 11 short. Now we're 12, because we have other drivers that are looking to leave, that have left. And we have a few more that are looking to leave at winter break or sooner. So even though it's great, we have two additional drivers, one interviewing. We're, we're this bouncing back and forth of people. Um, we're also talking to recent retirees about coming back with them changing the laws that they can earn up to $15,000 within a calendar year, within the nine months. We're also talking about retirees and see if we can't bring them back now a little bit sooner if they want to work a few days a week. And we are being flexible. It's not like, hey, we're looking for AM PM up. It's like, when would you be able to drive a bus if it's AM or PM just to try and make it? Um, you know, what else we're doing, what that's to say there is, you know, our drivers are picking up all of our, all of our trips. You know, Mike Williams took, just took me to the airport and back, right? But these drivers are doing great. They're needed all the time. We try and do as much as possible to take our kids and our staff and to fill our routes. And they're stepping up, they're helping Denise and Lori doing all that positive stuff to work. They're going to burn out at some point, right? There's only so many extra things you can do. It's been tough, but at some point, a breather is always nice. So let's, we'll continue to look. So in terms of the rules and say, well, the important people over what the state law requires. So there's a site on MDE that actually they do it originally, except they do their, and I guess all the questions. So are we required to transport? School districts are not required to transport by your. If a school district decides to transport, there are specific. So we do have the obligation to provide transportation of special education students. If the IEP committee has determined that transportation is a specialized service, which is included within and necessary to carry out the student plan. And that every student with IEP qualified or anything that has been excluded. Will the bus pick up children outside the house? There are no special laws or regulations for transporting regular education students to kindergarten. And this is for kindergartners specifically. There are no requirements for a kid to go to school in kindergarten. It actually doesn't deserve the first thing. Which means that there's no requirement to pick up kindergarteners at their house. Is there a law about how far it sounds to walk the bus out? No. Does the bus stop, so? Where would they need to be? Not saying we would do that, I'm just going over what. Is there a specified distance that must exist between school bus stops? The lights on the school bus, which are used to notify other traffic to support. Of an upcoming stop must by law be activated 200 feet from the stop. So that mean bus stops must be at least 200 feet. That's why they have to. What other factors are established? Or are involved in establishing bus stops? That the placement, the basic legal factors are spelled out in, in the MCL. Primary concern is visibility of the bus to other traffic in consideration of stopping distance. And accomplish safe voting and unloading children. State law requires 400 feet of clear and continuous visibility on highway or roadway where the speed limit is more than 35 miles per hour and 200 feet when it's less than 35 miles per hour. Lines of sidewalks, there's no responsibility or district, there were the sidewalks. No requirement for bus monitors. No requirement on maximum lighting distance. If you need someone to run for two hours, you can fight. And what if, somebody had the one with the one and a half mile. So there, and the requirement, we can go a school board can determine to a one and a half mile radius of the school of a non-transport. And so provides us with. Yes. So with looking at that, so by looking at that, what we need to do with routes, looking at no transport zone. We talked about the different alternates back on that August 28th meeting. And one of the options was a no transport zone. So we put that there just at that time, we looked at a no transport zone again. All students in town, which includes Westridge, does not include Westridge. Um, but that's Dexter Crossing, Walkabout Creek, Hilltop here on Farms, part of that. Um, that would help reduce another two routes. So that was kind of the basic quick gist of that alternate option one. So this is kind of what we're looking forward with now moving forward is that, is that option. The purpose of today, we're going to approve, and then there's a type of agenda for discussion. And in the end, we go over and then what we think next that might be, but it really is a very good. So there'll be a lot, I'm sure you have a lot of questions and thoughts yourself. If you could let Chris and I just let us kind of flip through it a little bit. If you slip at the end, we'll be able to answer questions at the end. So what we consider, um, I'm looking through this and working with Denise and Lori, transportation of Chris. We looked at what the law says, so that was part of the MDE, what does the law say? Um, we can and can't do. Um, we looked at location of flashing crosswalks and crosswalks at the stop signs and stoplights, right? How walkable is our district within the zone we're thinking? Um, sidewalks throughout the city and access our DCS campus, you know, where are sidewalks? How do we get students to our buildings? Uh, the distance from homes, from school to on the, on the Dexter campus. Um, we looked at major crossing points, crossing the railroad tracks and had a lot of that discussion. Are we going to make kids cross tracks or not? Um, that was a point we had a big conversation, where the river runs? We're going to have kids come over the river or not? So that was part of our discussion. As we move forward, ability to use the bus hub as a central pickup spot. That bus hub makes it nice and it's a big spot where our buses already meet. So could we use that area as a spot to bring kids and have our buses take kids, especially if they need to cross Baker Road or Dexter High School? And then we looked at differentiating the high school and other grade levels. Like, is there something with the high school where this high school situated? Are there a couple other neighborhoods we could look at for high school students specific? So our plan right now, when we look at this as far as for discussion, so a district non-transport zone, our plan for young five to eighth grade. The non-transport zone would include all students in town. Again, Westbridge is not included. Um, but it is. Right, where they come underneath the one bridge by NW, didn't want people that way. And so we just, we took Westbridge out of it. Um, but it would include students in Dexter Crossing, Walkabout Creek, Hilltop, and here on Farms. Um, all students within the no transport zone have a sidewalk that connects their house to the school. So we can, that gets them there. Um, families within the no transport zone, we need to transport their students to and from school. So however that is, however they decide. Um, and as of right now for our young five to eight, this, we added this year that there's going to be a bus, the bus up at 7:30 AM that would take students to DHS and Creekside. So if you're in some of the other neighborhoods, if you that distance to Creekside, you can all meet here. We would have buses at that time as they're dropping students off. It could be like a shuttle bus at most. Um, so when you look at that, when you look at the map here, it's visually appealing, it's correct made it look. Um, it's taken one of the maps and point out, um, the red line at the very top, we've heard of that, the railroad tracks. So we would not have students crossing the railroad tracks. So those students that live by the cider mill that, I forget the name of that road real quick. Um, we would pick them up so they wouldn't have to cross the railroad tracks. Yep, right there where Chris has the cursor right now. Um, also everything on that side of the river, right? So within town, it's kind of the zones we talked about of what would be that no transport zone. So plan is very similar for Dexter High School, for high school students again. Um, but what we've included, you'll see on the map, we've also included Ventry Drive. Um, so that area, which has been Arrow Court, Sandfield Court, and Milbueth Court. And then Weber Drive as well, which includes that Kirkland Court and Janine, did I spell that right? Janine Drive. Um, those students, those high school students, ninth and 12 graders would walk from those two neighborhoods to school. Or, you know, that's right, or get a ride to Howard's there. So families would need to figure out a no transport, would need to figure out a, a plan for their students to and from. Um, again, if those students in the neighborhoods, Adventure, Weber wanted to walk to the bus hub to come over, they could do that. Could be close to the high school and everybody else who's in town, rather than walk that distance, there would be a bus. There's already one there, I believe it's 7:30 already, right Denise? There is a shuttle bus there at that time. Yeah, no one utilizes it, but it is there, that would, that already brings it. So we'll make sure that that is there, um, to bring students, if you're walking from the neighborhoods around, if you're walking from, um, here on Farms and Dexter Crossing, you can get out of the bus and take the rest. So again, the map is very, very similar, except when you look at the bottom left, um, that the red box grew to pick up those two streets and neighborhoods right there for Dexter High. And it did make sense, maybe they were correctly cross street lanes. For our homes. Yes, and they're currently being bused. So everybody within that, that red box right now is currently being bused. And it's there. So that's the area, if we have those students in those areas, they would, it would reduce two routes for our. Um, so currently, so how many students are impacted, right? That's a question, so Craig, how does it work? Um, again, Denise and Lori are masters of what they do. Um, our transportation tool is Polyplot. So we know exactly, I could tell you student names, we don't want to drill it down that much. Um, but right now it's a total of 239 students that would impact, um, that are in our no transport zone. They, well, they are the students that are registered for buses, correct? So these are the students that are, they could be on the bus probably all. Well, these are, they may not be, these are students that have registered to ride it right there. They have signed up to ride. Yeah, and you may have the McCullough family that lives downtown, said our transport, I didn't sign up for a bus that we would not know of. So you're right, but these are families that have signed up to ride our buses at least once a week. Then we, and that's why there are Polyplots and we have a seat for them. So as you, as you look at the numbers there, it over 89 high schoolers impacted, uh, 30 Mill Creek students, 39 Wiley, 37 Creekside, and 44 the. So that's the students that impact now. So some of the maps are, I keep walking closer. I don't know about you all, as I go, I can't see. So this is the map of kind of that walk zone right there. Melanie helped us put it together, so you can see where we have Mark, where our flashing crosswalks are already. That's where if the students choose to push the button and flash it so they can cross the street, I say that because I've been multiple times, see students look to do it, crossing, doesn't push the button. So that doesn't really help. Um, but that's where, so the yellow one, they're all flashing crosswalks we currently have now in our city Dexter. The Dexter Icon, our schools. Um, yep, and then we also have Mark crosswalks and then crosswalks with stoplights. So there are spots along major roads that our students can cross safe. This is, so when you look at distances, okay, Craig, what are we talking, right? So if you look at Creekside right now, a path that they would take from Creekside. Um, if you go Creekside to the railroad crossing by the cider mill, that is 1.11 miles. That's what taken going to the stoplight, walking to the corner there by where, um, the Dairy Queen isn't coming back and walking up, right? This is following the routes. Um, it's there. So that's kind of just a thought in your mind, how far are we talking? So from Creekside, that's, I guess, at 1.1. Jump to the next one, way back, the neighborhood there behind bushes, the farthest street from the back is Wilson Bride. That one there from Creekside again, crossing safely, crosswalks, using the lights, going that distance I mapped out there, it's 1.65 miles. So that distance is farther, so when you look at it, it's over a mile and a half. Um, but we'll show you on some other slides. That's why we put a bus at the bus hub, that distance straight. Excuse me, distance two. So this is same thing, Creekside, Wilson, driving a little bit different path. Again, that's a little bit more for a safe rate. Um, that's about 1.6 miles as well, that's coming up our bus hub, following the path in front of the deck. And crossing the damn house. So again, that's farther than the 1.5 we said. So as we looked at it, okay, how do we make this work? How do we make this more walkable for our parents? Glad I brought my water. Next one is a distance, if you're looking all the way back by the cider mill, to get to the deck. And that distance is one mile, 1.38. There's one major crosswalk area. We have to go across. Uh, there's a flashing. Period. We have to, part of our next step. So when you look at here now again, thanks Chris. So, um, this one is just shows Dexter High School, if you were to walk, what's a mile and a half out? We just did a line about how far I think you're right. Yeah, that's good. We're going back, get you there to about the building, right? So if you're looking at how far out, this is just an example, but like how far is that is for a mile and a half for high. That's to the roundabout there by the blue house from the high school is, uh, right about 0.7 mile. Show when she gets to the end of something. So those are some examples. So again, so now we're looking at Wiley, right? So we're looking at Wellington, that other neighborhood back there. Um, from Wiley to Wellington is 1.3 mile, 1.32 miles. And that is following, uh, this map right here, solid for walking path that does go through Wellington. Um, to get there, if you do the road, it's about the same. I mapped it again, staying on the road the whole way and it's approximately the same thing. Um, again, Wellington drive to the bus hub, right? So for a high school student, you'd be walking that again about 1.3 miles. If I lived all the way back there, Wellington, I'm a high school student. I can meet the bus there at 7:30, get to school on time. Um, Wilson to the bus hub, that's that 1.5 mile and quarter, right? So again, before we had said that it was 1.66 mile from there all the way to Creekside. This is an option that we need to bus up, we're happy to transport kids the rest of the distance to Creekside. But it would get to everywhere else I'm getting this, with that mile on it. So. What we'd like to do is, tonight has discussion. And we're going to schedule our, we're going to change it for discussion. Two community forums, one in person, one on social, to make it accessible to families. Bring a finalized plan to board. And then share, well, do this with forums too, but share information with families, phone call mailing, emails, website. Looking to nail something to the house to show, so we did a talk, potential no transport zone, they should be notified every bus. Yeah, um, and then we would put that in January. So some of the considerations for next steps, there's one more slide. So what we do again, send information out to families, right? So we send out multiple maps, like, okay, what is a no transport zone? What does it look like? What are those walkable sidewalks, right? Where are the crosswalks? Let's say, how, what would you, what is the path here? Um, all the information on the websites, let's be defined as much as possible. Melanie, your crossing guards, right? Contacting the city, figuring out where crossing guards are, where can we have them? Um, what can the city do now that we know we're doing this? It's going to impact traffic and driving now that we're going to have students, um, in more, or more traffic, the families driving. We will continue again, all options to fill our bus driver roles. Um, at this point, not saying we would, once we start in no transport zone, I mean, keep it, we need to keep all the other routes running as well. We would look at creating, we have locker forms, we would really update those for young five through six. What is that walking plan for students going home? Right, so what, what is the route that they're going to take so that we would know, um, who would have that information? And then again, walking after the DCS. So assume we only have one transport zone. Right. And one's got to be, it's got to be all of your clients, you know, it's the same for all students. No, we would do a different one for high. The high school would have the, the other. The neighborhoods that are direct, that would be outside the mile and a half or, or a no entry student to walk over. That we wouldn't include because they're outside the city. Um, but those things. No, but they make, they're a little trickier to walk. Yeah, we would not do that for a young five and. Well, it's not that, there's no sidewalk. Or you gotta hit brush shield roads or paths, it's pretty bad crossing, crossing. And those roads are pretty easy to pick up and go the other way because they're already coming from places. So the, put it later on the agenda, we could, we could start with meetings. Put it under discussion. Again, discussion.
All right, um, next on our agenda, we have public participation during public comment. Each speaker is a lot of the maximum five units for a total of 30 minutes unless otherwise identified. If speaker will be asked to announce his or their name in district of residence and indicate if he, she, they represent a organization or agency. No person may speak more than once on the same subject during a single meeting. Those wishing to receive a personal response from the board or superintendent must complete a public comment form available at the meeting entrance or on our website. In addition, as presiding officer, I would like to remind everyone that public comments should be, should pertain to Dexter Community School District matters and concerns related to the operation of schools versus matters within the authority of the board. Those who wish to speak shall drag all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. Also, speakers addressing the board shall take into consideration rules of public courtesy. Speakers who make attacks of a personal nature and or do not abide by the rules of common courtesy will be reminded of such rules by the president or presiding officer. Such individuals may be asked to leave the meeting if their behavior is disruptive or interferes with orderly progress of the meeting. Also, please understand that board members do not respond to public comments, but we will listen very carefully and will follow up as appropriate. If there is immediate need for clarification, we will do so after the speaker's allotted time. I have two green sheets right here. And I think there's a couple. Ryan, did you get some as well? Okay, just, okay, um, so the first one I have is Mason. And Mason, just, just for the, if you could just say, say your name again, and we pop here. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Mason Vaughn, I'm seventh grade at North. My sister and I have been through so much in the last weeks.
Hey Mason, let me get you a microphone. Because we want to make sure that we hear. If that does, thank you. Nevertheless.
All right, Mason.
All right, Mason, just. You got it. I know you got a lot of words.
In eighteen point, seventh grade at Northgate, my sister and I have been through so much in the last weeks for you. I'm coming to date fast and perfect. Why am I the one who takes out my sister? Why do I get beat up for doing so? Why are the kids who are fourteen not even getting talked to when I was at Creekside? Why doesn't anyone hear us and speak up? Why are we willing to be bullied? My sister, who is my twin, has emailed to the superintendent asking for help. No one responds. How do we trust any dog when nothing happens? Can you help us make it better and make the bullying stop?
I'll see if I can talk louder. Thanks. All right, good evening, everyone. I'm Pippa Livingston. I have three children in the district, Mason's born. Today, I'm asking you to address the bullying and harassment and issues in your district. As my children returned in person to school, after being at virtual for a year, my child was bumped out with a note on her desk stating they ate her fat, along with other spellings. I emailed the teacher at the time and was to ask what was found and to get their side of the story. I was not with that, they don't want her to play the victim. Please report number one was written through the school liaison. Fourteen more documented incidents occurred happened that year, along with formal complaint written. Only one incident was reported to Michigan Department of Education. The findings were that they cannot confirm or deny, but until the next year, at the same school, another incident happened. Formal complaint number two was written. The findings was my child gets away with things out. Accusations start to happen, mediation that happens and takes place, followed by a Snapchat group. I emailed the vice president, vice principal, and the superintendent about that. The only response I got was sorry, Sam. When I emailed the whole board, it's written on December nineteenth of twenty twenty-two, in regards to Snapchat group that was made cyberbullying my child, I said that before I was taking screenshots of threats, cyberbullying. Response from the board was a handbook explanation of bullying and harassment back to me, along with it should be on social media, and it happens outside school grounds. There was some rough language, many racist remarks and threats of violence made in that group. My child was dead to the group. She was so safe in place and added, added me to it, and she left. My child did the right thing. Social media only gives a platform. It is up to the parents and the child on how they use it. There are, there have been more incidents since, incidents in school than with, than they were on social media. Twenty-four or twenty-five more documented incidents occurred the rest of that year, including physical assaults, verbal assaults, written harassment and bullying, the state received a count of six bullying incidents. On May nineteenth of twenty twenty-three, district received an email from the superintendent stating we were notified a social media post that was concerning, and goes on and says we immediately removed and searched the student who made the threat for the rest of the student body. We did a full investigation, which was assisted by the Washington County Sheriff's Department. Why is there a difference between the children? Why was, why was my child late gate group disregarded and my child unprotected? Why does each school seem to follow a different handbook, or pick and choose which rule is to enforce? I was instructed by Washington County Sheriff's Department, which I did, I filed case report number two, which would, with much debate from the officer who arrived. My child was present and asked why we will no longer protect her. Actually, many schools called parents of the children that were identified, and that was the end. On June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, I filed case report number three with guidance of my attorney. More cyberbullying threats, one threat made to the principal and dashboard. Students who assumed made those threats was the same student for the prior year of torment to my children, who still attends actual schools. On August twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, I personally met with some administrators in the schools this spring, along with my attorney. She was some upcoming years, some upcoming year concerns. Her first thought was, why is it being put on Mill Creek's shoulders? Why is it domestic, you know? It honestly isn't right for them to endure the shortcomings of our school building. With that being said, yes, absolutely, there's more incidents. These children are coming, these children are coming off two years where they can do anything without being held accountable. Parents are not trusting of the administration due to the neglect of severity of incidents occurring. Just this weekend, another post was sent to her. The post, of course, is bullying her. She doesn't even know these kids who's, who was doing the store. What is it going to take to make it stop? Why won't anyone in this district protect my children? Why aren't parents who, who speak up, figure out the problems? Great. I am asking for Dexter, follow law, hold these children accountable, teach forty-two to the handbook. Lately protected characteristics are such as sex, race, color, natural origin, religion, height, marital status, and disability. My child has missed ninety-one days for instruction. She goes out to twenty-five percent, but my child sits fifth and sixth grade on occasion. Due to an unsafe environment, my child also emailed the superintendent, asked for help, no response. My children lives, my children live in fear of going to school. I'm here to ask you to uphold the handbook, so that each, what each of every parent signs yearly. Follow protocol, tell parents the truth about what happened. Do not sugarcoat it. Report to the state the correct numbers of bullying. Uphold every child in this school to serve as appropriate education and not have a mature hostile educational environment. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Betsy Finn, and I have two, well, I have had two children in the district, have one in the district currently. And I just wanted to express that the fact of the bullying incidents are not unique just to this one family. My older child also underwent numerous instances of bullying at school. And it was expressed to the, the principal and all who was in charge, and we were told that it would be dealt with. But so far as things go, nothing ever really came of it, other than the child being moved to a different classroom that was causing the issues, and they were ultimately moved back to the same classroom. And nothing really changed so far as the experience for my child.
With your hand, of course, we have to report you, so we move on to our administrative and board updates, serving with this superintendent.
Wrapped up the German exchange today. Friend just flew to the airport, they're great, ten days, our group of students that hosted fifteen students from often seen this kid now, they were burnt out, and we tried to do it. Great experience for all the families, parents, uh, parent teacher conferences. Or if that brings, Friday, if you had any such things to ask me, with all the district staff, training. Things are rolling, and I don't want to take away student reports.
Uh, next up is board presidency.
Just sorry, we have a lot of updates for it, so, but that's water quality, it's headed to states, which is exciting. Soccer, they lost in district, or they won districts this year, which is great, but lost the regional, but that's still a huge group. Cross country, thirteen overall in states, I believe, right? Simple, seven overall in state, which is very impressive. The girls swim and dive teams, going to states, you know, how do you want the stage in, right over there? And football just lost a game, but still made a pretty far, they also stated, but how, like, so many sports programs this fall is really over itself. What's called also made it to states, so, yeah, it's a lot of.
Yeah, I think it really shows that I'm passionate to have that, I agree. So I, as a student, I'm very, very proud of them. Some other updates is we got the parent teacher conferences, so they're happening this Wednesday, so I have a lot of people who have actually signed up for that, so it's exciting. And I adjust this caution thing of, yeah, tutoring, and we're going to try and shift from high school tutoring to other parts of the district. So this is like exciting, to really help other younger kids with like tutoring aspects, like that's exciting. Drama just wrapped up their show, and I feel it's really good, and they actually started to, started for their new show. Show is actually going to be really exciting, because the students actually direct their own shows and make their own art, so I think that's a really cool thing that, that's very.
We don't have any consent items, so we'll move on to our action items. Our first action item is the policy second reading. On September fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, the policy committee met to review policies twenty-four fourteen reproductive health and family planning, and twenty-four eighteen sex education. They recommended the two policies be combined into one priority. The committee made no changes to the existing policy text. There is one legal update from Miola to the language regarding prohibition of abortion referrals. The committee also added the definition of sex education. Providing these policies will mean rescinding of current policy fourteen fourteen. On October sixteen, twenty twenty-three, the Board of Education approved the recommended updates for first grade. The Board of Education approved the attached policies fourteen, fourteen, and fifteen. For second. Hang on a second. It's been moved to second, we'll move on to discretion of this activity. I just have one now, your paper should be rescinding twenty. So, my, yes.
verification, that's the thing I heard working out there, puts up the deck here. We still have other policies, parents review, for this clarifies what is sex education with regard to all specifically. It's subject to the laws regarding sex education, which are of all curriculum, like parents, and they're all parents of.
Yeah, I would say that this, from the committee, it was to make a better clarification of the, of the policy not to muddy, muddy any concept. Also, optional, we also define that it is not a required course for graduation. So. There any other stuff? You're done. Yeah, it's just been a springboard. We'll scroll through some reading, because sometimes when you have more policies, if there's one word that's a pass with the other, there's an argument to be had, so by putting it together, putting it next to each other, it wasn't changed, so I think. I've done is always, it will always be an option, this because it's never a requirement for children to, or, since.
This just sets, it's clear on what is falls under section three eighty-eight, that would be certain. Which is why we have. There's not a long compass.
Any appropriate discussion? All right, Nelson, it's to approve the best policies for second reading. Anderson. It's an action item, so we'll move on.
Aye.
Greater aye.
Aye.
And Angus?
Aye.
You're lovely.
You're aware of?
Aye.
Move on to the second action item, which is to approve comprehensive course catalog. This evening's package includes an executive summary, executive record, Brian Bruder, regarding updates to the comprehensive course catalog. Tonight's package includes updated comprehensive listing of all courses available to, to DCS students. As explained in the executive summary, this is, this listing includes the addition of special topics, social studies, and AP IP biology, HL one A and one B. The approval of this catalog tonight will not create new courses, new courses will continue to come before the board for discussion and approval as usual.
This is.
Well, I'm moving forward on education, so they asked for, however, in twenty twenty-three, comprehensive course catalog. Awesome. It's been moved to second, any discussion?
This does allow some standard increases. If you run, if I ever set them. Maybe find it, if, or, their talent, their learning quality.
Can you say about the special topics? I don't totally know my question. It seems like a real opportunity for students to pick and choose. It seems like a heavy burden for staff. And I guess I'm concerned about that, and I'm wondering how many people are taking advantage of this, or how often it's used, and how we're compensating staff for it, and whether that's a thing that's sort of outside of school place. I mean, I appreciate the opportunity it provides, but I am worried about it as a, if we're trying to fill other classes, it seems like we offer a fair comprehensive course catalog, and it seems like a really amazing thing that we offer.
We do have special topics in the other subject areas, although since I think that process. Yeah, special topic was the one category that was not represented, special topics, we thought it'd be important to put down in the books, in case these situations do come up. We do have a student, for example, right now, who's seeing a special topics mathematics, where it really has a coding emphasis on it. So he's able to, he developed math skills, but also be pretty advanced level computer programmer. So he's been able to work with the teacher to develop orders in this special project. To your question, your point at least, at times it is a little additional work for the teacher, but I think that the, the number of special topics that we're offering and supporting, it's been, it's something we've been able to manage. And we, it allows us some opportunities to be a little more nimble, I think, so, like, for example, we're looking at next special goals and special topics. That provides. Where we end up settling, special topics on, I tend to, digitally, the. This upcoming term? Yeah, I'm not sure that they were able to pull off in this term, but I know in the future it's something they'll talk. I think it's, it's got to be, I'm going to get some opportunities though.
I mean, one of my concerns was just that, I think we were, I feel like we were having a conversation about how many students a class needed to run. And so if we're cutting classes that aren't giving them enough number, but then offering select students opportunities, I just want to make sure we're really being fair, and I understand the issue of being nimble. This just seems like. And, and I understand that we have other special topics, I guess, just as someone sitting in my seat, I feel like this is also a right problem, it's like, are we compensating teachers fairly for it? Are kids really getting fair access to all the classes? We have a lot of online classes, so who's getting to the special topic class? I just, I see lots of issues that I don't love.
Yeah, sometimes it becomes a different kind of study for some kids, which actually.
Which is like college stuff.
Or our kids are taking AP IP class. We have, we do have, I believe, we have, there's some things that does lots. And we can make things, for kids, based on what it's. And, you know, like a special topics in social studies, you could pop up, that's basically, roll it. Maybe to a special topic, and have a teacher who's passionate about it, cause it's.
So are these full classes?
Sometimes just all the.
I know, like, my daughter last year took the, she was in with a lot more students that were also taking part. It was, she was more advanced, you know, so I think. I don't get a supervising teacher, but she was.
Right, she was.
She could get some management.
I can tell you what I saw in all media, I would have students and. And then they call them. They're independent. And I would have students who are forced that next semester would be in one of those special topics that then were helping. They provide projects and everything in favor.
Because I understand that we have some catalogs that are not updated to offer at any point. And so the catalog is very teaching essentially. The first of them presenting that. And so that's a way of flexibility. What am I going to offer something for the start of two years or something in order to do this? Uh, the main class. I guess that. For the first you have the office catalog.
The special topics.
To be, I know we have them together to topics, I I am aware that kids are taking them. I think it's an amazing offering that we have, but in light of the past conversations we've had about filling classes and making sure for vision, I just want to make sure that we're really there everybody.
Someday.
We've worked to further define the policy procedure first when you're rolling in special topics course. So there are two layers of that approval to just ensure that it doesn't become the norm and if we don't lose control of something. Uh, so we really worked to better define and communicate the policy to students, the counseling department, staff, so really making sure that when students are enrolled, it's been is being done well.
Yeah, that discussion. Great. We'll put it to the roll call. Raderex?
Aye.
Miss Angus?
Aye.
You're lovely.
Aye.
You're aware of?
Aye.
Bruderly?
Aye.
Great. Um, then our third point, additional sex ed advice report, SEAB members. At the October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting, the Board of Education. Board or packing in the regional memo, two names were inadvertently left off that was to be to be appointed this week.
I move the Board of Education of twenty ten. For museum, Laura Preston, Sex Education.
I'll second. It's been moved in. During no discussions, we'll put to a roll call vote.
Miss Angus?
Aye.
Mr. Mundy?
Aye.
You're aware of?
Aye.
Bruderly?
Aye.
Mr. Raderex?
Aye.
Moving on to our discussion items, um, we have updates on the all generation center committee and funding. Dr. Thomas put updates on the progress regarding the funding of all the generation center committee and the benefits are the issue.
So we are moving forward, uh, we are giving from. Representative Ryan in the office. Paperwork centered forward in. Services, we are seven three at my phone. Day of forty-five days required. That would move to the end of the actual appropriation currently of the supplemental budget that says. First employer they're wishing, so with that. Property. Set of this. Then. So we are working on appraisal of property right here. For vehicle appraisal. Use it and then.
Second item discussion is the MEASB delegate resolutions. The MEASB delegate assembly on November nine, district delegates will vote on amended new for date resolutions. This evening, package contains a list of all resolutions to discuss. Um, there's also a link to the full resolution handbook. Uh, proceeds received these resolutions of the act number sixteen, twenty twenty-three meeting. This evening is an opportunity to discuss any resolutions of concern if the voting delegates guidance as a board.
I want to say that I read all of the resolutions that are going to be voted on. The ones that were amended once. Um, and I thought like all of them are very consistent with the policies that we have in case of Dexter. And they provide updated language and a rationale for the change and I vote all of them a good sense and as a favor. Assistant power of our party.
I agree, that stood out to me, but I always have a mind for misinterpretation. Things so. The call.
So a lot of. I'm sure that even though we don't have any methods, I'm sure that. Any other.
There will.
I've never seen rubber scrolls like this.
Um, then we will move on to our discussion of the no transport zone. Long correction information, Dexter's base school district continues to have difficulty staffing bus routes earlier in the meeting. For operations. And Dr. Thomas. Uh, shared a proposal for creating a no transport zone to reduce the number of routes. This item is for discussion only this.
He said, he said two cars, they have one or three of that kids. See, he like. These balls people.
Yeah. So. So I I'm mindful because I'm. The buses are actually built, so the kids are. But some of them are.
They're bad, but they're bad.
They're bad to the. But same as. Um, you know, my only concern on the no transport is young guys in seconds, maybe like the third and the fourth graders or eighth, five and six. I see my like kids friends walking up too, and I know where they live. They live on the back part of the street, so I know that that is doable. Um, but I am a little concerned about. The why you look up five seconds, how they would be under, I'm wondering if it was a crossing guard, I'll be better about that. I'm also wondering, and I I think in the literature, if we could encourage, you know, parent led group in a neighborhood like if you have, you know, if they're able to pull that together. These neighborhoods are very close, they know the parents and they know what. They know, so I'm just wondering if that's part of the conversation again, because I know this is. Been talking about this since our obvious meeting. It's been a swirl, it's I've never minded it, Ross and Carlos. What's coming at us, we know it's.
Many districts.
I would hope so.
We reliability.
That's true.
That was always hard, or you know, it just kind of along that same line, it was when I was building principles, like, oh, well, let's get volunteers to help out with pickup and drop off. Sounds like a wonderful idea until all of a sudden Mr. McCullough is sick and doesn't show up to volunteer, there's a bunch of kids and responsibility there. So it's hard to for the school to take that and organize that sometime because then it falls on on us. So I I fully understand and we've had lots of discussions with the Dean and Lori and me and Chris and Billy principals and and drivers talking about what does this look like? What does it feel like? What does it mean? Um, you know, but it's it's hard right now or this week, we've got the routes covered as of right now, right? So it's a good week, last week there was, you know, there was no buses on Friday. Um, we've had quite often the last probably four or five weeks before that, one or two days. Um, unfortunately, there was a week, was it a week we couldn't provide? There was one week where two routes, they were they were out for the week. Um, and and so, you know, going to this will help us keep all the other routes going, keep our students who look farther.
I mean, it's a bummer, man, you guys have thought about it with all the diagrams. Those are my only hesitance, and I know that as I'm saying, we think this one.
No, 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 but no, but he may add up, so please, like, bring it up and say it and ask, and that's what our parents, when Chris and I, you know, we talk to our families, but they're gonna ask, so we want to be thoughtful, so. As I always say, please say it, because even though we have, I'd like to hear that are around the right track.
Well, I'm honest, this is the number seven, having a form, that's that's tomorrow.
Oh, no, between, it was between those days.
I said you were gonna. Number seven in December five, that's why.
Between.
Okay, that's fine.
Give yourselves a month.
That's fine, okay, that's. Yeah, perfect.
Um, I appreciate all of um how you laid it out for us to let us know what our legal obligation was. Uh, and then I really appreciate that, of course, we know what. Our legal obligations, we don't have to. Um, and yet we know that as a district, that's not how we're gonna go. Uh, so I appreciate all of the time you thought that put in, you put into how we are gonna keep our our students safe within this no transport zone. And again, all the thought that you put into, you know, this is the furthest, uh, you know, reach of like this, um. Like Dexter crossing and knowing how far that is. And then thinking, okay, we've got a bus that is there to shuttle. So I appreciate all of all of the time and effort that has gone into it. Uh, and then we we of course know that we do want our students to be safe and, you know, crossing guards, and I know that we we do, we are sort of a mercy of city at that point. Um, and while you gave your presentation, you said that you you saw students that don't always push the button, Mr. McGolvan. I also don't always push the button.
Oh, please. We we have signs made in there, I think they're in yet, that at the the high school there, a shield road that says, push the button, like literally, you made two, they're like, push the button. Because I was, I was riding a school bus one day and you watched the student just picked the head up phone and just kept going.
Yeah.
With cars coming and cars had to come to a stop and they didn't even think of the bike, I just kept on rolling and it's, um, yeah, so it's.
Sweetheart, who's driving in the city? Sweetheart. They also don't.
Push the button, I don't. I. I just want to provide all the opportunities possible to keep kids in in where it is safe.
Um. So I appreciate, I just wanted to say that I appreciate um everything that that you were putting in. In that there and showing us that you've done those diligence for.
All of the cross occurrence. Situations determined that the city has responsibility for that overall makes a decision. Whether they're gonna figure that out.
Ultimately, they knew that they asked us, so we are meeting the city this week.
But we put it that's. Setting across the earth, there's places that's just a bit across the. Doesn't keep.
Fast.
What is, what is, um, I remember like we used to have the state, we used to have safety, I think. Right, and then, of course, I've always looked at our NHS kids, because I know that they always need the hours.
Probably they start school before.
Right. And they have meaning. Friday night, so. Absolutely.
In the sixth grade.
You could do no three. I'm no scot. That's a great, that's a great thought, so yeah, you think it. That's a great thought, the thought of you, I really appreciate that, that would be a great, how do we look at, right? And how much the city can support us or not support us, where we could put in the safety squad, you're right, they have the.
The seat.
You don't ever let him stop there.
I know, that's the.
I want I want older than sixth grade though, because I know how Baker, Mr. Tells me, Mr. Larry got real mad and they want to stop me, oh, still there, head hill into the car. So I know he needs something a little bit bigger than sixth grader.
Right, well, I mean, we do have.
There's a very clear, you clear guidelines, it's like your job is to push the button, like or whatever it is, do that or not.
I'm trying to think, it's that whole process for you. And we do have CSML. Students.
We we would just want to be thoughtful.
Right, right.
Out there. Yeah, we have to be very thoughtful.
So.
We said for two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in oxygen.
Yeah, we had, we had students, we had students in the neighborhoods and then we had adults that didn't major. But the other person I had regarding the city is whether, I'm thinking about biking routes, because if you're a father and have to be fast on a bike. And whether the city has then designated any biking friendly initiatives playing up or.
Good question, I don't know if there's any like specifically markings on roads or wherever, but if bikes need to be could ask, see, that's a great question, we may need to add bike, uh. Border to border. Not that, but bike stands or whatever at our school, because we may get more, we, yeah, bike racks. Um, we we get more bikers coming, we mean, lots of spots for them.
So it's not able to.
Yeah, you're not supposed to Dexter, they're on city.
There are signs that say.
They're what downtown blocks.
We have to give it ticket.
That's not that very.
Don't rest, right. If it isn't.
I would say. Um, okay, one question and a comment. The question is, so this is gonna save two routes, can we then tell the other, like, does this allow us the opportunity to tell families that the rest of their routes are run this year? Or are they still?
It's a higher likelihood that yes.
Okay.
Um, we do have drivers coming in now, saying how short we are, that are, they're wearing their mask, they're trying to push through it. Um, if we had those two routes, I I'm not gonna put, we're like, we we could have situations, we had a drivers, you know, a family, and so. I would say that there's a very high likelihood that we would not have to cancel any routes the rest of the year.
It would have.
Is that a good statement or?
That's a good statement.
We have like a one.
At this time.
At this time, okay.
It makes our odds better.
Their verities. But we theoretically have a driver for each group if we take these two. So a couple just random thoughts, you don't have to answer for just like thoughts. One is just, I wanna, as I live in the walking route now, I've thought to myself, what would be my thinking as my kids are different ages? I do like the bus hub transport um option for Cree side of high school, because I just would have trouble thinking about that crossing Baker. Especially in the points when it's dark and you have two center of the school in the dark, so that's my other issue with walking. And I know families are gonna have to make that decision and that's on them and that's fine, but I appreciate the option from the bus hub. A second thought might be for families, I don't know if there's a way to do this, I don't know if there's a good place, but is there any use that we don't use for parent drop off? That if families wanted to come drop their kids closer to get to the bus hub? That they could, it's just a thought, because, I mean, people in my neighborhood, they come and drop them in random spots in the neighborhoods, so they come up to them free. So I think we are going to see more people, so you might just want to think through like. If we're gonna, like, maybe we want to throw people this direction or that direction where it's less busy, just the.
I I can see people pull across, especially because, especially if you're a Cree site or high schooler who want to get early enough for like those transports, so you're gonna be before the main rush.
Yeah.
For the the DAP and provided, so I could see them pulling in, having kids come out and walk down to the up in those areas. We talked about, and you know, we have to figure this out, the Dean and I did, that could you do? We did talk about this, shake your head and say, no, you made that up in your dream, that do you do within actually the bus hub itself? Here's the section and like set up a set of cones and a map where drive, parents can commit, drop their students off immediately. Um, we talked about that, right, we talked about that, we would have to feel about how then we have cars with buses. So we would, we just want to think that through, that was one thing. Yep, yep, but if they were like towards the top, towards anchor there, we dropped them up there, you could really peel them up, because most of our buses are down lower. Um, so we we did discuss that about how would we make that work, and that would just be another thing for our drivers, to make sure they were safe from the traffic coming and going, uh, just to manage.
I think it'd be.
I wouldn't, because I don't know, families would be like, add that line into the DAP is really long, so I'm just gonna pull it here now and drop my kids, that, I I don't know how you manage that, but we we thought of those other. Yeah.
I don't know, we suggest or they figured out, you don't want.
I don't have an opinion on that, but I foresee. I don't have an opinion on that, but I foresee people around town driving close to her, dropping their kids somewhere to get them either to their building or to the shuttle. So I would just think if you want to direct them somewhere, this would be your time to share that.
And we could have a register for that staff also. And make sure that these kids are coming from our no transport zone, and they're not coming from Strawberry Lake Road. The parents just doesn't want to go to the school.
Right, so they can do that now.
Well, yeah, because we make them register.
They drop off someplace where.
No way to get to the shop.
Yeah, so they would, we had a show, so it's a very. Like, it all probably depends on where the families come, because in my mind, we do have a school that has a loop that's not really being used, it's right here.
Yeah.
You could have people pull in, drop off right here to walk up. Now, you say that Creekside is right across the street, so it gets the shuttle. It would just. Yeah, yeah. I think it would depend on what part, it it, I think it's a, I think it's a good puzzle, it's a good puzzle to think of, yeah, 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 and I think it would depend on what neighborhood you're living in. Of where would you want to come and then drop off, right, like, where would that be?
We can just find enough people to staff the buildings where in the morning they drop off earlier.
Jared, what's your answer to that?
We just, we get free breakfast, we just need enough people that would work for an hour and three.
Normally, most of them are walking to that stuff. I mean, like, parents' arms and Dexter Crossing, them students usually walk. So you wouldn't have a whole bunch of parents.
They do, my concern is, like, by the time you're at high school, you've got sports paddocks, you've got instruments. That you're bringing back and forth every day, so I'm I'm just, it's raining, it's snow, I'm just, I know what happens again. Over here on Mars, near Mill Creek in the afternoon, there's lines of people who don't want to go into Mill Creek area, so it just, I bet there's gonna be, I mean, you might have to see what happens and then figure it out.
And then maybe some of those that you watch, like what they do sometimes with brand new buildings, they don't put all the sidewalks, so they watch where people walk. You can see the dirt paths, and that's where you put your sidewalks, you may want to watch and see organically what happens.
Yeah.
And then put some shrubs.
Okay, two more quick comments, one is, I think we need to do a push the button light for all the students, as Mara said, especially at high school. I mean, if you go down, she'll grow at a certain time of day, the sun is in driver's spaces, you can't see the kids, and I know they realize it. And so I think every building, every, every building, every student, like, campaign, like, one day or something, and it's just all about that in some way.
It's, that's true, I I will tell you, like, I would say Van Hooy is worse. There's two weeks, every spring, every fall, when you come up, you cannot see. Like, it's, the sun is right there, and I was with some students, one of the one bus that got shut down was the the one for Hilltop, so the students, I said, all right, we're gonna push the button, we're seeing, Mr. McCall's gonna cross with you there, right? We got the buttons, they pushed the button, I said, all right, let's make sure that one car stopped and it picks them, and the other car just sorry as they blew through, and I'm like, go with it, okay. They're like, we did what you told us, I'm like, yes, you did, you pushed the button, you watched, this is why we have to watch, I think, not everybody even stops when you push it. So, so it is some of that, I I would agree, I think we need to have our classroom teachers that go when it's here, let's let's have that discussion, right, about what it means to cross the street and what is it.
Okay, and then I process my last comment. Um, have we, this is something I've thought of before, have we ever thought about putting, like? Holes with little flags, like by color, like within our campus to like take to school? I'm thinking of these kids, I'm thinking of them walking back and forth, and it was just like, I need to follow the blue flags to get to school. You know, or around the, around the, yeah, I mean, at first I was thinking paint lines on the ground, but I feel like that's part of the mother, so I was like, which is cool. Again, you know, like, there's a yellow school, a blue school, which school are you trying to get to? Just some kids are very not good spatially, you know, and thinking about, like, them in the back of this. Campus, is there a way to just signal you're following that flag to your door? Just something to think about, just a thought.
Oh, gosh, oh, my gosh, yeah.
What I'm thinking, so they were thinking. They know their peers.
Well, it might want to stay away from colors.
Yeah, oh, with the shape, like, it's all the bother. Yeah, improve accessibility, probably have an analogy, it's just a thought. You don't need an answer, I just.
I see these large ceiling balloons blowing up every morning over the top. Yeah. I will say, I I think it's happened, right, it's like right now for buses, you know, that's always the fears every year when school starts, all the buses, my child's not gonna know where to go within three, four days, they know bus twelve is here.
Yeah.
And they're able to get, I I think it would be, we would have some structures, private adults, to make sure where people are going, those first little while to get them there, but it's something that I think about how to. How to cross them. I don't know, too, some neighborhoods too before had, you've never seen, like, some towns, they have all the flags out of holes, and even when you cross, you hold it, but you leave it at the other side, so you're kind of using this back and forth. Just another visual of the whole the flag, like, I think, I've seen them in some cities, some towns that have them.
Good point about the. Register route a little more, because if the kids are gonna find shortcuts, like you say, the organic, how are they gonna get through the path?
Well, like the one path from Creekside to where at the edge there by the tracks by the side, if you're going there, like, I made them follow the sidewalk, they're gonna cut to the park.
Right.
Right, so that'd be even shorter, but I didn't like to, like, if you're gonna follow the path that's built, that you're supposed to according to the law, what was the distance? But I was about like. I'm really good at Google Maps distance measuring, so if you want to give, I can show you how this will.
Any changes you think in terms of, we talked about next steps, anything?
I think that's well that out, I think it really is well thought out, I think it really reflects that. I think the distance measuring is really helpful for parents to see if it's gonna be a change, so it's like to be. But.
What time are you?
Well, and that was having to, I mean, even though we're doing it, we do have no transport zone, and we just have the consistency with those people, versus saying, oh, I don't have a bus driver today, and I know you guys are well ahead of that, but, you know. And so that we have to scurry and figure it out, but consistency is totally different. So, as much as that might not be ideal, it will be getting the go with it, system.
I'm thinking about the form, if you could squeeze one in earlier in the day, just sometimes it's, or for staggered times. Add enough a third, maybe, I don't know, I just. That's the only thing, just making sure that enough people participate.
They have to be easy zoom.
You know what's helpful, I do a lot of, like, lunch, like, see things.
You can do it midday zoom. They don't have, they don't have children around at night, they're doing dinner, homework, or playing. Good stuff. Taking a team, so I needed my team.
We move on to our second opportunity for public participation, seeing what's why has four now, each speaker has brought a maximum of three minutes, so anyone who'd like to. Come to the podium and speak loudly. I know, I've tried to make it very. Okay, now, we'll move on to board comments. Melanie pointed out to me that I did not update that the F D probably did.
And I thought it was too.
And then, and then we looked at the meetings, so. Yeah, the Education Foundation of Dexter won the rivalry match solidly by, you know, twenty five and some change.
It was, it was.
Well. As I've shared, I think that they, I think that they were, they defined the rules.
Oh.
Well, master of you. I mean, that's the thing, is that everybody, honestly, everybody, the students, and the teachers, and the grants, and the grants, like, well, this will go. So, the next meeting, next week will be going to all grants that. And for people to go and see the dedication of. The outdoor space, learning space, inclusion space, which is awesome to see. I think it's. Awesome, yeah. That's all I have. Pretty.
I I have a W, I have a Washington Association of School Boards meeting update, a very enthusiastic group of representatives to tell you guys this year. Um, and we are negotiating our mission and what is the realistic function of the group and how we best. Coordinate together and work together to make our school boards great, so the thing we're talking about right now is we are, we're scaling back a little bit. And we're starting with the collaboration around what we, how we all use students in our school boards and in our districts, so our next meeting, sharing things like that. I did, hope did send everybody the email that I just wanted to share the next two legislative breakfast dates, everyone is always welcome if you wish to come to those at. Seven thirty in the morning, and then I really would try on Monday morning at seven thirty, yes, and then I really would try if we can come on March fourteen. To that, their annual meeting where they're moving continuing ed, and they really are, really did talk about making a meeting, a pactful presentation about special ed in our county. So that all school boards can be talking about what we're doing, why we're doing it as. I will let them know. So it also. Uh, no, that one's cheating, I think it's. So that's all I have. Also, it's a great.
We're gonna sell it. Alright, anyone else? Okay, we just have informational items, not affectant, as always, our finance meeting, our multi-generational center meeting minutes, and nice job notes where we pull our science. There is not a closed session planned, so I will adjourn it.